All right. Starting off, welcome everyone to the Town of Kipsey Planning Board meeting for March 20th, two thousand and twenty-five. Please join me for the pledge first.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the first day of spring as of five oh one AM this morning. We'll start off to let you know that the NOS distribution has asked to be off the agenda tonight. So I moved that the planning board adjourned the public hearing to April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moved to the second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. One, two, three, four, five, six, tonight.
What was the date? Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Six to zero. And just to note for anybody on Zoom that we have two alternate members, Bob and Mike filling in tonight over here for absentee members. All right, moving on to Serenity Greens at twenty-two forty-five South Road. Come on down. Jason, if you could just pull the microphone down so it's.
Right, you got it.
Super, thank you. Yeah, less feedback on the. Well, also he wants to speak into it. Welcome back. Go ahead and present your update. Just get some of the stuff out of the way here.
Good evening and happy spring. So we've received the comments from the previous submission, and I think we addressed a lot of the comments. There are some outstanding items that received this previous round of comments, and like to just go over some of them, one of them being, you know, discuss the crosswalk at the South Gate entrance. We came before you and we originally wanted to keep that South Gate entrance open as a one-way. We worked with you and we decided to close it off and keep have a mountable curb so the fire department can still access the site or more or less leave the site. But now we seem to get comments back from the New York State DOT that, you know, they want the crosswalk, which we agreed that would be a good call, but now they're looking to put in pedestrian cross signals, which is a very big expense to the clients to put that in for South Gate Drive. And we were looking along Route nine, and Dunkin' Donuts was just recently done not too long ago, and they did not put crosswalk signals on Neptune Road. And I think that's a pretty big ask for a crosswalk signal to be put in. We got from the engineer that we're working with that that's an approximately fifty thousand plus expense just for a crosswalk signal. Like I said, we're happy to work with you for the crosswalk and to get access to the site, but they also mentioned that they wanted to put a mountable ADA drop curb on the other side of South Gate Drive as well, which is just keeps, it seems like our site is now expanding down Route nine rather than staying focused on where we're trying to do this adaptive reuse and make this building beautiful. And it's just getting, it's just spreading out a little too far. So we just wanted to kind of discuss that with the planning board and get your feedback on it. Again, like I said, they did not put one in at Dunkin' Donuts when they did their site work. They did put in a crosswalk, but no traffic signal button thing. The other item that was that was brought up, we did discuss in our meeting, I think it was a workshop meeting with Chris Mills from the Arlington Fire Department, that if we provided, we, in the twelve-foot lane that we have. One second. If we were to make the sixteen feet, we would lose our sidewalk that is going around the building. So it would interrupt our pedestrian circulation. So we had to talk to them about if we, because that's just landscaping there. If we provided a mountable curb for them, it's only in the case of emergency. If there was a fire, we don't care about the landscaping. We do want the access for the fire department. So it was a conversation with Chris Mills during that meeting that if we provided a mountable curb, that would suffice the fire department to get their access to the site. So we would be asking if we could keep that as a twelve-foot drive aisle with a mountable curb and keep and not interfere with our ADA parking spaces. The other item that came up was we did show plantings in front of the building, and for the sake of, I know we had some comments from the, I think it was the water sewer department regarding the landscaping interfering with the gas line, the sewer line, and rather than having them planted, I'm proposing that we just do a plotted, a potted tree rather than something that's in the ground. It will give the same effect. In this way, it's not interfering with the infrastructure below. The comment, there was a comment also about the grease trap keeps coming up, about removing it and capping it, and the clients are looking for a restaurant use to go in here. And we had talked about this a couple of times in our meetings, that we'd like to leave the grease trap in place for the sake that if we find a restaurant tenant, we don't have to go through the expense of removing one and then installing another one. If, in fact, we do not get a restaurant tenant, then I believe the clients are open to removing the tank at that time. But at this point, we would like to leave it open for the option of getting a food tenant in there. The rest of the items that were brought up, I think, were kind of minor in respect. You know, the traffic analysis, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm not quite sure that's going to be between your traffic engineer and their traffic engineer to address those comments. You know, the biggest thing, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was with closing off that South Gate Drive, there was a comment brought up about drainage, and I believe right now currently, all the drainage is leaving the site right around here and coming to that catch basin on the corner. So what we could propose is rather than having this be a closed-off curb, if the planning board is okay with it, rather than disrupting the flow of the current runoff, doing something like a drop curb or like a scupper that would still allow that water to exit the site as it normally does now. If that's not acceptable, we can discuss other other options. But I think that's, it's a very flat site to begin with. There's very little topography on it. So at this point, the only option I see for maintaining the water, stormwater runoff, is to provide some way for it to exit the site and as it normally, as it is right now.
I mean, you want that to be mountable for the fire truck anyway, so I think we can.
Yeah, I think that's a thing that the engineer would want to comment on.
The other item that is minor, these wheel stops back here, we can remove them because part of it is that we want to allow the water to to shed off the property, off the hard pavement. So, and also we're using that for snow storage. So there was a comment about if they were necessary, they're not necessary, we can remove them. We just didn't want people to drive onto the grass, but I think that's.
Just, just to be clear, the, the, the parking bumpers are not what we were, what we were concerned about. The water is going to flow through those. It's wherever else you have curbs that are potentially causing pond that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, there's no curbing proposed where those wheel stops on the west side.
Yeah, but I don't know, we don't, without topo, we don't know where the water's flowing, right? So that, we kind of need to know where the water is going and what effect the curbs elsewhere that are proposed would have.
Correct.
So that, that's, that's the, the point there.
Yeah, so we, we asked the engineer, the surveyor for topography, and he did not provide any to us because I believe there's probably none on the, like, the site is very flat. If you go on the parcel access, there's like one line of topography for the entire site. So I'd like to see the, I wish the other night when we had the downpour, be able to witness to see where the water is going.
There has, I mean, there has to be a way to provide topography, even if it means providing, you know, tighter spacing between the topo lines, rather than two feet, provide one foot, you know, the, I'm sure there's at least one foot of grade change across the site.
Yeah, the only place it seems to be to change grade is in the front here. It drops down towards Route nine.
Right.
In this corner for South Gate.
So, you know, lacking, lacking topography, he can provide spot elevations around the site so we can at least see which way the water is flowing.
Okay, we'll see if we, we'll work on getting that for you. Other than that, I didn't see any really major, major comments that needed to be addressed, or they need to be addressed, but nothing that was a major concern.
All right. Thanks for your updated presentation. Go to Kristen for.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the project overview. It's on for a public hearing this evening. Also, for secret purposes, just for the project record, it is a type-two action. Just as a reminder to the board, it does require no further environmental review. The application is also on for site plan review and architectural review. I know, Jason, you hit on a number of the comments that were discussed at previous board, at a previous board discussion, but also amongst staff and the comments you would have received from staff and our consultants. I, I guess there's just a couple of items. One, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that the applicant also did coordinate with the town police department, and concerns about screening have been addressed. The, the police department actually requested that they didn't place the fence, but work with, or work to provide a low landscaping along South Gate Drive in order to have better visuals around the property. They also coordinated with them about the community, or with the community policing unit in order to address any concerns they had about safety on the site. So I just wanted you to be aware of that because I know it was raised at a prior meeting. Yes, we did meet subsequent to the last planning board appearance with the applicant. We also met with, or had a conversation with our traffic engineer. We had our traffic engineer review their traffic engineer's analysis. I will let Mark speak to that. I hope he's on.
He is.
Okay. Awesome. I'm not going to go into that. I had some site-related comments. I was the one that actually flagged the wheel stops. My point for bringing them up was for your snow storage, just being able to more easily access it. So it just to me seemed like, oh, I don't know, I just witnessed them get destroyed. So why, you know, have the expense if you can avoid placing them? Or maybe there's a certain part of the site where you don't place them, so that's where the snow storage is more easily, easily accessed. I don't know. I'll leave that to you. But I do understand also not wanting folks to drive over into anything as well.
There's a wall there too, so they're not going to drive too far, even if they're.
Correct.
Right. That's exactly it. So also just wanted to hit on, I know we've requested this a couple of times, but just demonstrating on the turning maneuvers, showing the actual lanes. I could have missed it, but.
Yeah, I realized we showed it on this one for the W, the SU, we showed the lanes, and somehow it did not show up on the other one. So we will correct that.
Okay, cool. And so I think, I mean, ultimately, in terms of fire access, we were good with the maneuverability anyway. I know that Chris is, Chris Mills is actually listening to the meeting right now, so I don't know if you've had a chance to connect with him about that east side of the property, but Chris, if you wanted to comment on, if you felt comfortable at this point to comment on that.
Yeah, the, the, good evening. The mountable curves in front of the building, the concern was the landscaping. As long as there's not trees or large potted plants that would interfere with the apparatus movement and access in that area, then the, the mountable curb would is, and the twelve-foot width is, is an acceptable solution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then, yeah, and then the only other thing was the South Gate access. If you need to put drainage in there, as long as it can support the weight of the fire apparatus, then that would be acceptable too.
I appreciate your updating us on that.
So, you know, I, I have, the comments that I have remaining, aside from the conversation regarding the pedestrian access across South Gate Drive, just as a reminder to the board, the prior two applications I had looked to go into this property were looking to redevelop the site. This applicant is looking to make use of an existing structure, so we're working within existing constraints. Ultimately, the board can comment on whether they would like to see that pedestrian access provided, but when it comes down to touching that corner of the DOT area, it's DOT's decision and jurisdiction ultimately, so.
Now, I mean, the other projects, we, you know, requested sidewalks as well as that crosswalk, because there's a bus stop in front of the deli, and I can imagine some customers coming by way of bus to the store here. But we were saying, we, you know, because it's an existing building, we're not doing the sidewalks, but I think the crosswalk is still a good idea. We'll, we'll see what other board members think.
Christine, can we, can we have them do the crosswalk without doing the electricals on each side? I mean, is that.
Again, this is driven by DOT, yeah.
Completely up to the DOT.
Yeah. And I actually did reach out to the person who had provided comments from DOT to see if there was a middle ground approach to this.
Right.
On your behalf, just knowing the, you know, and the, the response was that, you know, it, it implicates the need for accessibility, so ADA requirements, and you are touching the right of way. So ultimately, any highway work permit would be tied to them having to do this, these improvements.
I mean, does DOT weigh in on the sidewalk at all too? Because they were, they were mandating the sidewalk on their applications.
They understand that, the site constraints, so, yep.
Here in this situation, okay. So at least that part of the DOT is all right on, and we can use the crosswalk markings to, some paint is all it's going to cost you to get into the building. I'd like to see, you know, the paint continue up toward the Red Lobster as well there.
Yep.
You know, starting maybe between the handicap spaces and over. But in any case, we can get to that.
Yeah, so Mark is on for traffic, and obviously Andy also reviewed the project, and it is on for a public hearing. So depending on, on what the board discusses here tonight, you know, staff felt that most of these items could be addressed as a conditional approval. But that DOT item would be significant, ultimately would be tied though to any condition of approval, or, yeah, or be a condition of approval inherently.
All right, we'll see if, what Andy thinks also, if we can do a conditional or not.
Sure. You know, I guess we'll start with the drainage. We already kind of talked about that a little bit. As far as, you know, creating some sort of a, a, a scupper or a, a way for the water to leave the site, I'm okay with that. But ultimately, again, it's the DOT that has to approve that. So we'd have to come up with a design that, that they're okay with. There is a catch basin just at the corner there, so if you could align it so that it discharges directly into that catch basin, that may be okay. But again, we'd have to work with the DOT to make sure that works.
And again, making sure it's okay for the fire truck going through those.
Right. And where I'm looking at it, I don't think it's in that, that mountable curb area. I do think keeping the mountable curbs in that location is better. We, I think we want to make sure that that appears closed off.
Yeah.
As much as possible. So I think, I think we want to keep it that way.
It's been a sore spot for, for years to be in that close to the traffic signal here.
As far as the grease trap is concerned, I think every, I think it was our, our understanding that there wasn't going to be a restaurant anymore, and there was no need for the grease trap. If there's a potential for the grease trap to be reused, I think we can work with you to find a way to keep it. There's no sense, like you said, we don't want, we, we prefer an external grease trap. We don't want you to have to come back to us and ask for an internal. So if we can keep the external, we will.
Yeah, that'd be ideal. And, and as they said, if they wind up with no restaurants in there, they could maybe plan note that you could take it out later.
Right, right. You know, seal it up somehow. So that, that's fine. You know, I think the only other thing I'll mention is that, you know, the, the lighting plan did have one hotspot that we'd like you to fix, you know, a twenty-three-foot candle, so that's a bit high. So if we can just kind of try to tone that down a little bit, I think that's, that's really the last thing I'll mention tonight, so.
Yep, that is a bit hot, the twenty-three-foot candles. All right, can you unshare your screen for a minute and see if Mark is on for his traffic comments?
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Mark.
How you doing? Mark Patrow from JMC. Yes, we reviewed the traffic analysis that was provided by the applicant as well as the revised site plans that were provided to us. So Labella did, um, provide the traffic study on behalf of the applicant, and we reviewed that. So they analyzed the weekday morning, weekday afternoon, as well as Saturday midday hour, peak hour, incorporated a bunch of other developments that are in the area as well as general growth. And Andy, I don't know if you're on the call, but basically, when we had a workshop with the applicant, they had mentioned about the possibility of, you know, desire to have a restaurant there. So they did do a sensitivity analysis at my direction because of that statement to look at what a restaurant would look like from a traffic standpoint as well. So all the other uses, except for the dispensary, were, were run as retail as what's being proposed or potentially desired at those locations. So there were some cleanup items. We were looking for the traffic analysis to be revised just so that the inputs were correctly to get a baseline on the different intersections that were analyzed there to show, show what the operations would be like currently in, in the postconditions. It was noted that the study mentioned that the queues would back up past the driveway, but that's going to be under peak times and would be obviously contingent on the operations of the signals at the adjacent locations on Route nine for the ability for cars to get out of the driveway at those peak times. And as far as the site plans, we did just have a comment regarding the, one of the truck turnings, just to show the continuous path, looks like you might be flipping a curb, or maybe you just slightly adjust your, your turning path for the SU truck. Did mention that there's a, I heard the building code, there's supposed to be a no parking anytime sign for the ADA spaces, so just make sure when you install it, it's not interfering with the accessible route. And I did ask for just some clarity on the aspects of the operations of the other deliveries for the other uses. Obviously, you had mentioned the dispensary delivery aspects and how that operates, but, you know, the site is pretty constrained, so obviously tractor trailers wouldn't be able to circulate the site. We don't want those on adjacent roads and causing issues and backing up traffic on Route nine or South Gate or anything. So just, you'd have to plan your deliveries accordingly for the other uses.
All right, thanks, Mark. And Mark, would you be okay with a conditional approval if we, if the board decides that tonight?
I think we can work through those, yeah. You know, the, the traffic analysis is more just to clean up of some of the baseline data. You know, the site plan aspects that I have are relatively minor and just getting clarifications. I know DOT is another animal in, in certain things, so.
All right, thanks. Forgot to ask Andy that same question.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can work through these things offline, you know, as conditions. We can, we can make that happen.
Okay. See what the other board members feel, if we want to see more come back or not. All right, it's on for a public hearing. Should I move the open to public hearing?
Second.
Move to the second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the audience that does not look like they're anxious to speak on this one? Anyone on Zoom? Recognize most of the names on the Zoom as applicants, I'm pretty sure. Seeing now, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to the second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. I'll start with Peter first tonight.
We've had, this is the third application we've had for this property in the last couple of years. This by far is, is the least complicated, the least complex. One, first question is for Mark, and that is, when you looked at the traffic, was there any significant change in level of service at the light and South Gate?
Sorry, no, the, the aspect of the level of services didn't change significantly. Again, a lot of the, you know, they wasn't provided by the applicant, and they could have, is a comparison analysis of what the prior uses were to what the proposed uses are to generate. And if you look at that, they might be similar as far as the aspects of the traffic associated with just reoccupying the spaces they were previously.
Great, thank you. With regard, you know, the last time we required a signalized crosswalk was for a project called Hudson Heritage, just. was for a project called Hudson Heritage, just north of Marist. It's a six-lane highway. You know, if I were in your position, I would definitely engage the Department of Transportation and further that discussion, because for that expense, I mean, it just seems to me to be unreasonable, but that's.
I mean, we're not talking about a crosswalk across Route 9, no.
I know.
Just the.
I know, that's the point I'm trying to make here.
It shouldn't be that expensive, you're saying, for just across.
So I would definitely reengage them in that conversation. We always, I think we almost always defer to the fire department. They think the mountable curb there is okay. I'm sure that's going to be okay with us. Departed tree, I think it's a good idea. We had a comment from the planning department about some parking spaces that were not the 9x18. Is that going to have any effect at all in the parking count?
No, they definitely meet the parking demands for the property currently. The reason for noting it, I wanted to make sure that they labeled them, because some of them were labeled and some were not, and I think one of the spots actually labeled it as 10. And I couldn't tell if that was a typo, honestly.
No, because in your code, it says if a building, if a parking space is up next to a building, it needs to be 10 feet.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why we had the two spaces at 10 feet. The rest of them are all 9x18.
I knew that, I wanted to bring that up, because the parking is fine right now, but the parking is also sometimes, in some cases, driven by uses on the property. So some uses by our parking off-street code standard require more parking spaces. So to keep that in mind when you're thinking through tenants that you want to bring in.
I have a question for the town engineer, and that is, with regard to the curbing, isn't there a product, a curbing product that's perforated? In other words, water can flow through the curbing?
I'm not familiar with that. I mean, normally, if there's a need for water to flow through curbing, you can do a dip in the curb, and that can make it, you know, that can resolve that issue. And that's something we could look at that, you know, once we get the topography on the plans, we can look at that and see if that's an option.
So it's a solvable issue?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Peter. See you, go to Mike.
I don't have any comments. No, I was going to talk, but it seems like Arnold and Fire answered the questions I had, so.
My only question is, how long do you wait for DOT to get back to you with answers?
Well, it sounds like there's a couple things to talk about with DOT here, right? There's the crosswalk, but there was also the issue of the stormwater.
Yeah, the drainage connection to the street.
Maybe we can facilitate a meeting with the, with DOT.
So they're involved? Are they just waiting?
They have been involved. I think we've gotten comments. That's how we know that they're looking for this crosswalk.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we do a conditional approval, then it's up to the applicant to work with their staff and try to get this last meeting resolved.
There's like timelines built into the code, once you issue the approval, and then if they needed to request more time on their approval, they can request from the planning board time extensions. I hope it doesn't come to that, but yeah, we can definitely facilitate a meeting. That was my recommendation as well.
Reusing an existing building is a good idea, and when you can, and trying to make it work. You know, like Nicole's suggestion to get the crosswalk paint there, but not all the bells and whistles, if that can be done. All right, go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, my only other question, but I think it was already answered, was do you know who your tenants are going to be?
Well, as of right now, we just started marketing earlier this week, so we haven't heard back from any tenants or from our marketer. So once we find out, I mean, we can definitely relay that information once we figure that out.
Yeah, because the old restaurant there, and then they had a couple of tenants, they were like a shoe repair person, and then, of course, the car wash. So if you could get people like that, that aren't going to take up a lot of parking spaces, that might be better. Someone that could like repair shoes, or, you know, something like that, where it's just a drop-off and pick-up type of situation.
I miss that guy.
Yeah, I know, he was great.
Is that even a thing anymore? Are there shoe repairers?
Oh, yeah, there's a guy in the city that's really great.
Oh, yeah?
Used to be a guy, it used to be a guy who went to a brush from the cemetery on North and Route 9 there, but that whole set of buildings burned down years ago, and they haven't rebuilt them. My comments, I think, have mostly been addressed, other than, you know, making sure we, you could crosswalk paint on the southeast corner there. Make sure you get some crosswalk paint also to the Red Lobster, you know, or a potential, new future Red Lobster, because they're going to come in for something in the future as well, you know, continue to have a long side walk.
So you're talking about like an internal pedestrian connection? I think we had talked about this. I'm not, was there a reason for not putting that on the plan? Or did we just miss it?
Are we talking at the north?
Northeast part of the property.
You know, you have a striped area there up near Route 9.
We could show a sidewalk there, a crosswalk from the handicap loading to that spot.
To that crosswalk spot, yeah.
Yeah, it might be good to show like an easement, or, you know, something that says that, you know, a future connection there could be made, you know, the owners would be willing to make that connection.
There's a little bit of topography there. It gets worse the further you go back, I think, but closer to Route 9, it's not as bad. That's, can be determined when that parcel is developed. Any last thoughts? I guess not. Go ahead.
Move the planning board hereby determine that Serenity Green 2245 South Road is a Type 2 action per Part 617.5(c) 18, requiring no further environmental review.
Wait a second?
Second.
Move to the seconded for seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Serenity Green 2245 South Road, subject to the following: respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following 1 through 13. Second.
Move the seconded, or conditional, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Architectural review is up next. Do you have anything to present on that tonight? One second here. Down to the rendering. Yeah, I was going to get there. That way you won't have to come back again. We had some elevations in our package here.
So what we're proposing is to keep the building character, because it's a very, it's a mid-century modern building. It has a lot of horizontality to it. It has a lot of character from the 50s, and we want to, we want to keep that same language going. And, you know, it's a block building with a brick veneer, and it has some really nice architectural features to it that we want to, we want to keep around and really enhance the beauty of the historic building. So we're basically proposing to paint the brown brick that is there. We're going to paint it a dark gray, and we're going to redo all of the parapets around the building, because they're currently rotted. Where all the shingling, the shingles are, that's going to come down. We're going to do new parapets and add canopies to the front of the building at the, all the tenant entrances. So each entrance will have a covered entrance to the tenant space. We're keeping the colors very, kind of earthy, it'll be a dark gray for the brick. The stucco along the top of the parapets will be a lighter, light gray. And then we're going to do a black accent for the dispensary, because we want that to kind of stand out as its own, and as sort of an end cap tenant, and it's the main focal point for that retail space.
Are you changing the color of the brick, or are you?
So we're going to paint the brick. The brick right now is like a beige-y brown, so we're going to paint it a dark gray.
Okay, got it.
Let me zoom into this photo, this image here, so you can kind of see the color scheme that's happening. We're going to have a black banding that goes around, continuously around the entire building, that also ties into the canopies. The brick is painted, is going to be painted this dark gray. And then the upper part here, it's really, a really light gray color. That's along the top.
Okay.
Are there any roof-mounted units?
That's my, that was my next question.
Yeah, there's going to be some roof-mounted units, but there is a three-foot parapet that goes along the top of the building.
How high are the units?
I haven't been up there yet to verify, but we're going to be using the existing units that are there.
Okay, as long as the parapet is higher than the units.
Yep. Yeah, the unfortunate part is that you're going to see them coming down South Gate Drive either way, but from Route 9, you won't see them.
Yeah, yeah, there's topography issues where that does happen, but we're trying to screen everything as much as possible in the town.
Yeah, because right now, you can't see them, and the parapet's going to be put back at the same height.
Okay.
Thank you for showing the sign locations on there, too. Those are the only signs, right?
Correct, yep.
I like the pedestrian plaza in front, instead of trying to squeeze some parking near. Unfortunately, it was the widening of Route 9 a few years ago. Well, actually, it was in the 80s now. But when they widened it, it took away parking from both sides of the road, so squeezed both of them.
I will add one more comment. There will not be any benches.
Thank you.
We're trying to make it look pedestrian-friendly, but we don't want any zoning issues.
All right. I don't know, I mean, is this area allowed outdoor dining? If they get a restaurant, they could throw a couple tables down there.
Yeah, let's not open that can of worms right now. Please.
I'm the victim. I think there's a process for that.
I think there is. We'll save that for another day.
Yeah, yeah.
We do have to bang Route 9 down, further down, so. Anyway. Anybody have any extra comments?
Just a comment that, is that the color that you're referring to as gray?
Yes, it's a dark gray.
It's coming off as like a tan brown on our screen, so it's like hard to.
It's like a beige-y color.
It looks beige-y.
I thought I was having a stroke.
It's looking brown and beige on our.
Yeah, it is a gray. It's the way the rendering program hits it with the sight, with the sunlight. It does turn it that color, but if we were, it is a, we're going with a gray scheme.
Yep, dark gray and light gray scheme.
Correct.
I forgot, did you provide full spec on the, like, materials or paint or anything? If you could just include that with the next, I think that'd be helpful as well. I mean, as long as the board trusts us.
I think we called it out on, on the elevations, we called it out, smooth white, stucco white, or.
Mine's painted black.
Painted black.
I know, sometimes they actually go so far as to tell us like what paint or, like branding, if you can get, yeah.
We can do that. We'll provide colored chips for everything.
All right, and then in that case, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Move to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Good to go. Good luck with working through the conditions there. Yes?
Thank you.
You don't have to come back unless you're making a major change.
Thanks, guys.
We can follow up about DOT, if you, you know, are happy to participate, and that is needed or appropriate.
Yeah, I just saw that comment about that traffic signal, so we'll call Jason and have that discussion.
I'll just suggest, because I'm dealing, Jason, I'm dealing with the same, a similar issue on another project with DOT. And you might, I noticed that the comment says they would like to see. It doesn't say require. So you might ask him about, find out, is this a requirement or a request?
Yeah, that's what I did. I followed up after I got the comments in.
I haven't heard back, but, well, yeah, if you want, I think it would be good if we could.
They did say that they wanted to see it, so that's why I think they're, if you want to have a conversation, I'd be more than happy to participate in that. Yeah.
I would love that.
All right.
More the merrier.
All right, next up, we have, have a good night. Next up is 160 Salt Point Turnpike. Oh, no, thank you. Looks like no one in the room presenting for that, 160 Salt Point online.
I'm here. Amy, hello? Hi. How is everyone?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I know there's a, I'll give you a brief rundown. This is an existing office building that's going to be converted into six residential units. It would require rezoning to the residential multifamily district, which is directly adjacent to the parcel to the southwest. There are two existing entrances, and the existing impervious is going to be reduced through part of this section by about 50%, I think. So I have to, I just recently received additional survey information, which I need for the drainage report. And I wanted to come to you to see, sorry. To see what you wanted me to do about the entrance on Salt Point Turnpike.
Okay.
The DOT requested it be closed. It's currently open. I thought that the planning board would not want it closed.
I thought they just, yeah, I thought it was just a recommendation. They weren't asking it for it to be closed.
It's a recommendation I thought last time we discussed, it may be easier for fire reparations to keep it open.
Yeah, I think we wanted to keep it open.
Not a heavily trafficked area, but we'll see what other board members think as we go around later.
So the, whether it stays open impacts a few things, so it's going to impact my disturbance, may impact my drainage. The question of the sign, I'm showing two locations in the event that Salt Point was going to be closed. But if Salt Point's staying open, it's only one monument sign at Salt Point. And parking is another issue. I'm showing 18 spaces. The code requires 12. Again, I'm deferring to the planning board on that. I can bank extra spaces. I don't have to put these six in, but I can leave the area for it, for future, if we need it. I'm just looking to the board for direction on that. And the health department does not require this be reviewed by them if we're not extending a main. So if it's just a service connection, even with the meter pit, they're not concerned with it. But I just have a verbal conversation with Dan Keeler at the health department on that, so I'm waiting on something in writing. He will obviously just need the backflow preventer tested.
All right, thanks, Amy.
And then, yeah, I think that's it that I need direction on.
All right, Eric, what's the department's recommendation?
Sure. The application is for the board for a seeker review, the rezoning recommendation of the town board, and a site plan public hearing this month for the first time. The recommendation, there are a number of issues remaining. We did recommend the planning board discuss the ones that Amy mentioned just now. There are still some other, a lot of things, I think, from the engineer review that will be necessary for secret other things, so we prepared a recommendation for a deferral at this time with comments, but invite the planning board to provide direction on those items needing discussion.
All right, thank you. Go to Andy.
I guess I'll just weigh in. I don't, I was just looking for the DOT comments. I didn't really read their comments that it was a suggestion. I thought they were asking for it to be closed. I can't find it right now to verify that, but we should try to lay our hand on that.
We had it in our packet last month, I guess.
Yeah. Aside from that, you know, we still have some questions about what's going to happen with the flood. You know, because the site is in the flood plain, we have some questions about how some of the various amenities are going to be handled. They have to be, you know, bolted down or whatever. That's something that we need to see. You know, we're still looking for, you know, existing water and sewer service locations, so we know where it's going and, you know, what needs to be done with those. The, let's see, you know, Amy mentioned the drainage and the disturbance area. That is still a little bit up in the air. We're still trying to nail down whether or not a speed's permit is going to be required, because, you know, it depends on, you know, how much pavement has to be removed versus reused. If they leave the underlying, you know, subbase material in place, that doesn't necessarily count towards disturbance. So it gets a little complicated, especially when we're, like, close to that limit. So we need to, need to kind of nail down that stuff.
Yeah, I understand. They want to try to keep it under that one acre limit.
Right. And then finally, you know, we did ask for a drainage study. We still have some questions, you know, that it might be easier to, just to meet, get together with Amy and kind of resolve those issues, so. get together with Amy and kind of resolve those issues. Um, so those are, those are the kind of main things for us.
Was it, I forget, was this building have sprinklers?
That is the question. I think that they weighed in that they are required.
Yep. Building Department. Yep, it does not, it does not currently have sprinklers, but the building department is requiring them.
Yeah.
And I just found the, uh, correspondence from the DOT, Andy.
Okay. Thank you.
Um.
Did they, did they say?
It's a recommendation.
It is a recommendation. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad we found.
I don't think it's a heavily trafficked area that I don't think that it's not like closing Route nine.
Right, so the, the issue is the traffic, but we're only proposing six units, two of which are one bedroom, so I don't, either way, the traffic impact is minor.
Right. It is a busy road, by the way, Salt Point Turnpike.
Yeah.
But, so whether I close it is obviously, it's gonna be a different application to the DOT because the entrance needs improvements. The curb's kind of shoddy, so, um, they may come back with something like they wanna write in only. I don't know.
All right, we'll, uh, see what other board members think when we go around, but I think it's fine to leave open.
Okay.
Let's see, Carol had some comments as well. Oh, she's on, I don't think she's on tonight.
No, she's not.
But she, she had some final comments about the turtle barriers and stuff, so take a look at her letter.
I did see that.
Okay, good.
Amy, just also, I know that I spoke with her briefly and, um, since there's nothing on, she didn't address anything about tree cutting or bats because there's, that hasn't been determined yet on the plan. There's no clearing shown, but I know your responses said that that had yet to be determined depending on the studies that were forthcoming.
Um, I had needed a little additional survey information. Most of the site is not covered with trees, so, uh, just where we're discharging the drainage now is where there may be some tree removal required.
I guess that's what we need, that's what she needs to know, is if whether or not.
Right, yeah. I just, so I just got that information two days ago, Eric.
Okay.
All right. At this point, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to the second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on one sixty Salt Point Turnpike? Seeing now, I move we adjourn the public hearing to, you won't be able to submit for April, right, Amy? That'll be too soon.
No, because I'm gonna make an application to the DOT first and.
Right, right, so move we adjourn the public hearing to, to May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go around the board for comments, and start with Nicole.
Yeah, I don't know that I really have a lot here. Um, you're probably gonna have to get a flood plain permit, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and you said that you don't need department health approval? Was that what you said?
I don't. It's not a me, it's just a service extension, so.
Okay.
It's not required, but I do have to have the backflow preventer certified. The town would make me do that as well, so.
Okay, eh, that's all I have.
All right, thanks.
Nothing.
No further.
Mike?
The nineteen proposed parking spaces, is that the existing parking?
It's eighteen spaces. Proposed, but, um, it's actually a reduction in parking from what's existing.
There's a lot more used to be, the county's office.
Yeah, it used to be a CPA, CPA office.
So that. Yeah, the majority of the site, that's not what it, so it's about a two acre site. Most of it, most of the first front acre is impervious right now.
So you're reducing the parking?
Yeah, it's being reduced to, I guess it's being reduced to eighteen, but twelve are required by code, so that was the question, do we need more? I mean, I usually say a few more spaces for visitors or somebody having a party is a good idea. So I'm good with the eighteen myself, but we'll see.
I don't know any further questions.
All right, Peter?
Um, I think it's great whenever we have an adaptive reuse, especially, um, when the new use is something that's really needed in our community. I'm okay with Salt Point, uh, entrance, leaving that open. I think banking six spaces would be okay. We're showing, uh, forty-nine thousand square foot area of disturbance. You're gonna have to get that sorted out. At this point, that's all I have.
Yeah, that's what's closest to disturbance, I guess, to figure out whether you need a swip or not.
It's always so close.
Let's say, I mean, it's a developed area and we're removing, we're removing development.
Right.
So which is, which is helpful. Do I have anything further? I think we discussed most everything. So, yes, I think everybody on the board is okay with leaving the Route nine at the, I mean, sorry, the, the Salt Point entrance and not having to redo that. Everybody okay with the, she did provide a look at the, uh, early architecture in the back of the plan set. Everybody okay with that? Before we ever go, come back again. Looks, looks good to me. It's, uh, just re-siding it, the blue side, light blue side, it looks like.
It's a big improvement.
Yep. I mean, it got, got improved by the, the CPA a while back, a few years ago, but because it was really run down, but, uh, this will be another update. Let's see, I guess that's it then.
Okay. Move the planning board defer further action on this application as incomplete, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Inside responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of not limited to the following, one through eleven.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, sixty to zero here. Good to continue on, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Carl, I think.
Thank you.
I, I heard one board member say they're okay with the eighteen spaces and another board member said land banking six was okay. So just for guidance to staff, what, what's the guidance?
I guess I was okay with eighteen, wouldn't you?
Yeah, the eighteen is fine.
Anybody prefer land, or you want land banking instead, or?
I'm just thinking about impervious surface. You hope you don't need the extra six spaces, why not just bank them and, you know, if they need them in the future?
But in this case, wouldn't banking the spaces create more disturbance and therefore more likely push them into a swip?
It has that potential, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the weird thing here, because they're getting rid of so much of the pavement that they're gonna end up being, potentially they could be punished for doing what we would typically want them to do, so.
I'm good.
Okay. If it turns, if it turns out that they have to get a swip involved, maybe we, maybe it's okay to land bank.
Would the banking spaces help with the flood permit?
No, not really.
I don't think so.
No.
It's really more like, more of the stormwater, yeah.
Nice try.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's a weird situation, but it's, it's.
Yeah, we want, we want it to be successful. Um, as, as Peter mentioned, it's, uh, some smaller apartments are needed in the area.
Yeah.
So, all right, have a good night, Amy.
Thank you, you too.
At this point, we have a few adjournments. Seven Spring Side Avenue renovation, I move we adjourn the public hearing to June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Inwood Avenue Town Homes, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Spark Car Wash, I move the public hearing be adjourned to April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Sure, Eight Tucker Drive. Can we talk about Eight Tucker Drive for a second? Do we have any update on Eight Tucker Drive?
Yeah, the update is that they're coordinating with DEC. Um, they provide, they were provided comments, they responded to comments, they received new comments from DEC. It took many months to get the comments that they've now are working through and or potentially have already responded to and resubmitted back to DEC, so, um, without really knowing the timing of when they would be coming back, we felt it best to pull it, um, in fairness to the public and we could re-notice the public hearing. The first time this was noticed, I believe, was, uh, a year and a half, two years ago.
Right.
Yeah, DEC has been holding up for a while. Unfortunately.
They are, they are actively working on it though, so.
Okay, all right, so Eight Tucker Drive, um, I move that the planning board adjourn the matter and defer action. Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, sixty to zero.
Casper Hills South Road Development, I move that the planning board adjourn the matter and defer action. Second.
Moved in seconded, defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Manor, Manor Hill Community Project, I move the planning board adjourn this matter and defer action on this application as incomplete, directing the applicant to respond to the planning board. Deferral of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, including not limited to the following, one through fourteen.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, sixty to zero. At this point, I move we allow public comment on other agenda items.
All right, I don't think anyone in the room, no one's on the Zoom that isn't, was associated with the project.
Well, good. Let's skip this tonight, then. I didn't have a second.
Oh.
Second.
Second, okay. All right. Since I have a second.
No, motion for public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on remaining agenda items?
Desafu?
Seeing now, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes again. We can continue on with Dish Wireless. Another new antenna. Or set of antennas. Okay, I can see your screen now, so go ahead.
Great. Good evening. Al Glad from the law firm, Cutty and Fader. I also have Brian from Aerosmith Development and Bruce from Dish Wireless on the Zoom. So this is a relatively straightforward proposal. We are looking to co-locate three new antenna on the existing building located at eleven Raymond Avenue in the ATC zoning district. Uh, the building is a existing three-story office building with a approved Verizon wireless antenna, which was approved in twenty twenty-two. The antenna will be located at three different sectors on the rooftop and mounted on ballast sleds near the edge. And we were in front of the ZBA in February and we received both use and area variances, and we're before the planning board tonight for the architectural review. And primarily, it is to discuss the type of screening or concealment that we are proposing for the facility. So really, there are two options. The first is a stealth enclosure, which I am showing here. Basically, it will be a fiberglass wall color matched to the facade of the building, and it will go in front of the antenna, which will be located behind it so that you can't see the antenna themselves. Here's just some different viewpoints of what it could look like, basically extending, uh, the massing of the building vertically.
And you have one in each corner like that?
Yes, correct.
And there's the other corner, right?
Right, so really, it's, if you go back to the plan, here, let me go back to the plans, it's, I said three sectors, but really, there's two corners of the building.
Yeah.
Um, just at the southeast corner here, um, they're just propagating in different directions off the rooftop. And then the second option is a concealment film. All right, I just gotta find it, because I have a lot of PDFs open.
It's impressive.
It's a concealed.
It's concealed well, I can't see it.
Yeah, so it's, it's a concealment film that will go on the antenna themselves. So here, there is no, uh, screen wall and actually, we have some real pictures of existing facilities with this film on the antenna.
That's the three M's, uh, three M material.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep, and, and actually, looking at the real life pictures, I would encourage the board to consider this option over the stealth wall. Because, you know, here, it's kind of hard to see. I had to put a red circle around it, which means it's working well. But then on this picture, you can see it up there. It blends into the sky fairly well.
Yeah, I mean, we did, this is for, for a lot of the new board members weren't here when we did, did it on the Fox Run up at, up by Marist. Put it, put it up and we had them try that film for the first time, and it seems to work well. When you look at some pictures of it, when it's cloudy day, it looks white. When it's a blue day, it looks in the bluish. You see it, see it more on a blue day than you do on a white day, but. Does seem to do the job.
Yeah, and this is just.
Although here, we got, you know, a ray of three spikes sticking out.
Yeah, and then, and then this is just a close up from the rooftop right behind the ball sledge, and you can see pretty, pretty well that it's just reflecting the sky, which is the whole purpose to try to help it blend in, so.
This is from the back.
From the back, yeah, on the roof, yep. Yep, but this is, you know, an existing condition, what it looks like in person, a photo from the street.
In this case, on each of the, um, locations, there's up to three antenna, right? So you're showing one now, but in the future, there could be as many as three?
That's correct.
On each, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, they're just poles right now.
Yeah, right now, they're.
Okay, I thought it was just the side view of the antenna.
No, 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 so, yeah, the way the ball sledge are, there's three antenna locations, so right now, they would be empty.
And those poles, the structures themselves, wouldn't be wrapped in the three M, or would they?
So they actually could be, so.
That's, that's what's worrying is you're way to hide them a little better.
This is an existing dish site in Newark, New Jersey, and it might be hard to see on the Zoom, um, but the poles are also wrapped in the three M, and we can do that at here as well.
Yeah, I think that would be desire if we go, if the board decides to go with that option.
Yeah, so it makes the.
Makes them stand out a little less. Is there a reason they have to be that close to the edge of the building too, versus a step back a little, or?
Yeah, so if, if we set them back at all, it'll create some RF shadowing, so the signal will not propagate off-site as well, and the facility won't be as effective as it could be.
All right, and I'm sure there was technical reasons why it has to be there.
Yeah, and I have propagation plots too, if you wanna look at them quick.
It's not really part of, not really part of what we have to consider, so I.
No.
Yeah, but I have.
It's up to you, of course.
The zoning board granted variances and such, and the, uh, special use permit was being granted by the town board, I guess, right?
No, there's no special use.
Or no.
They did mention that the preferred method of screening was the insulation of the wall.
The ZBA did, yes.
Yes.
I'm with them.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think I'm with them as well.
You know, at Fox Run, this is a totally different application. There's no traffic there. There's no pedestrian traffic.
Kind of hits.
It is. This is a totally different, uh, location.
Well, also, it, it will allow them to add more to the location without there being any pushback essentially as well.
So I, I think the self, uh, the self enclosure is the way to go.
Yeah, I second that.
All right, anyone else, uh, comments, uh, which way they would like to see it?
Just, just a question. If you put an enclosure the way it's depicted on this picture here, would you be able to put one on the other side?
Yes, so they'll, it'll be same thing on the other side. I don't think there is a rendering of it.
In the other corner.
No, no, not on the other corner.
Yeah.
So that.
He's trying to say.
The facade looks.
Oh, right.
So that the facade looks even, and it doesn't look.
Well, dish, dish wouldn't, but I guess if another carrier were to also try to locate on the rooftop, you could, you know, that's where the space is available and.
Yeah, and that's, that's my biggest concern too about the, about that, the way it's.
My I O C T is.
But it's, it's not the, not the prettiest building to start with in my, my, my.
Right.
Yeah, the building itself, though, is not asymmetrical necessarily. Like, if you look at it as a, as a whole, it really isn't.
All right, I'm just thinking out loud, because this is from Raymond Avenue, right?
Yeah.
So this is, you know, pedestrians walking in it, and I walk by there sometimes, and I'm just thinking to myself, you know, this would drive me crazy.
I mean, it, this blends well with the building.
It, it does.
It's unobtrusive and I think it's a good solution.
Could you talk a little bit about the material being used, um, in the screening? Because it's not like brick, right, or, uh?
No, so it's.
The rest of it's eph, eph is probably on there.
Yeah, it's, so it's like fiberglass with, um, like steel or aluminum supports.
And at that height, no one would be able to tell the difference. If it's color matched properly.
Yeah, so it'll be color matched to the building.
I, I would be curious about how these enclosures stand up to wind, like what, what, you know, how does that? Yeah, how does it handle Augusta Wind? Does it, I'm assuming it's designed to accommodate that, but.
I would assume so, but maybe if Brian or Bruce, if they have anything more specific, I would invite them to speak on that point.
When they did such an enclosure on the other side of Raymond Avenue, they had to meet building code, yeah, and this would as well, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we did do that as a precedent across the street, I guess. We have, we've done, we've done it both ways. Primarily, I guess, we've done enclosures to screen. But, uh, the one at Fox Run was the experiment we did with the, the film, but as Peter mentioned, it is.
It's a different application.
You can't see it from either road. You have to be on site to, to see it.
The other, the other thing about the Fox Run one is, it was, it was just a cantenna. It was just a one small, you know, piece that was sticking up. This is, you know, ultimately, you could have as many as nine antenna on these, in these three locations, right? So it's definitely a bigger.
Yeah, that is certainly to consider.
Is, is there a picture of the wall in the other corner?
Yeah, that was, that was the third diagram, that one there.
Yeah, so I believe it's this one.
So that's from the parking lot by Hurricane Grill.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking across. I mean, as you're right next to it, you'll, it'll look smaller when you're next to the building. But this is from further away. Uh, what do you guys think? This way, or proceed the antennas?
My only question is, and we need this because?
Yeah, yeah.
Dish is in the process of building out their network, and there's a current gap in coverage, so they need the facility to remedy that gap in coverage.
It's, Dish is, Dish includes Sprint and?
Yeah, they merged and did, when T-Mobile and Sprint merged, the FCC handed out another license, and Dish grabbed that license to maintain that fourth carrier.
Yep.
Okay.
I think right now, they're operating as Boost Mobile.
Boost Mobile, okay.
Okay, yeah.
What do you think about also?
What do you, what do you think? What do you guys think? Installation of a wall or not? Because that's really the two choices that he's looking at, he's looking for.
Would it add significantly to the expense to put the material on the wall? Get the best of both worlds?
Wow.
You're funny.
You don't want to.
He gave us two options, I'm asking if there's maybe a meet, an intermediate option.
Creative question.
Actually, for the antennas at Marist and at Mike Artecas, the antennas were mounted on the walls not to exceed the height of the parapet.
Right. And then we had.
Is that an option here?
And we have, and Weiss Marine, we did the same thing, I think, and we color, kind of color matched it to the.
I would say no, I, I think the agreement with the building owner is for it to be.
On the roof.
Roof mounted.
So I guess, I think we're leaning toward putting the, the screening.
All right, so a screened wall, it is, they did receive the use variance, and then they also received an area variance in, in anticipation if, or for the potential, this being the potential option for your visual mitigation. So they already have the height variance that they would require.
Okay.
And then, just because it didn't come to me, I just wanted to point out that we were missing signature blocks on the title sheet, so that's very easy to throw on the block. And then, any details related to the materials being used for the screening choice, if you could just make sure to include them, like the height. And it had made some mention that they wouldn't know until building plans were being submitted, or like, the whole design was ready. But if there's any way to include the detail, that'd be great, in terms of dimensions and all that.
Okay.
Also want to confirm that the variance, that it falls within the height, right, so.
Yes, I think we had a height mentioned on the elevation to the top of the screen wall, and we received the variance for it.
Okay, cool, and if you could just include that with the, on the title sheet, we usually just require applicants. Now, we're trying to get into a habit of including any area variances, so just the variance that you received and the date of receipt on the title sheet would be appreciated.
All right, I guess we should move forward and.
Okay. I move the planning board grant a conditional architectural review approval for Dish Wireless, nine eleven Raymond Avenue, subject to the following comments, one through nine.
And with the recommendation being for the screen wall versus the film.
Second.
Move to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes five to one.
Thank you.
Next up, we got East Dale Village, come on down, Jeff. If you're planning on putting any wireless antennas up at East Dale Village, make sure you build it into the architecture ahead of time.
We, we already did.
Okay.
No.
Hi, again, good evening, board, Jeff Kane, representing East Dale Village with Courage Health Companies as the, as the applicant. I can, uh.
Welcome back. It's been a while.
Yes, it's been a while, right. I don't know how to share my screen here.
Out of practice.
I am, I am very out of, out of practice here, right.
You're not, you're not going to blame, blame it on the cell reception?
We can see it now.
Okay.
Successful.
Okay, um, so, um. There, there we go. We're here for Building H, and just to kind of, again, orient the board on where we are. Uh, this is Route forty-four, Dutchess Turnpike running up and down on the screen. And East Hill Avenue, north and, and south, running, running left and right on the screen. So we're talking about Building H, it's at the corner of, of Route forty-four and Parkside Drive. It's next to, you know, again, the buildings I six through I ten. And just as a quick update on, on those, I six at the corner here, the foundation is in, but the rest of the building is not under construction. But I seven through ten are occupied and operating, we have a little doctor's office there, and Bertolozzi Physical Therapy moved across the street, they're now in doubled size, so they've had a very, very successful tenancy here. And they're now owners within, within East Hill, and so happy to have them as part of the, part of that, part of that ownership group. So again, it's been, been very successful. So Building H, and we've, we've, we've struggled with Building H in terms of funding tenants. And we're still, again, working on this building as a, as, 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 in some ways, as a, as an unknown in terms of what the occupancy will be on the, on the ground floor in terms of tenants. But there are four, four apartments above. This is the, this is the building that was previously approved, the architecture previously approved. And I'll just go back and forth between the two, this is the, the new proposal. And I, I tell you, this building, as we went through this, felt much heavier. And so we, we tried to lighten up kind of the, the look and feel of the building along, along Route forty-four. So went to, went to a white scheme, went with these, instead of the, the, the bay protrusions on the, along forty-four, the, actually, the stairwells are inset, and this dark, this dark, uh, uh, hardy planking in there really creates a verticality on the, in the building. We thought that, that really just served, served our purposes better for how this building will look along forty-four. And then, again, as part of that, it really kind of increased the glazing on the, on the two sides of the building, both the alley side and park side, drive side. And, and in the rear of the building, the parking lot side of the building, again, more glazing and, 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 you think, improved that, that, that verticality instead of massing of the building. That was kind of all the idea behind the change in the, in the, in the architecture. It remains a, remains a, a hardy building, we've got a hardy siding with the, the white, the Arctic white as the, as the primary trim and, and siding. The hardy iron gray, that's, that's these, these darkened areas and the, and the recessed stairwells. We've used this combination on, on some of the buildings. And then the, the doors are the, the, the not hardy doors, but we are matching the hardy country lane red on the, on the door color. And then our standard black architectural singles for the, for the roof.
Okay. What do you think, everyone? Did we architect a little change? I think the white blends in better with the old, the other existing buildings and the, and the red base. Myself.
I'm good.
It's fine.
Like the new one.
Okay, nothing.
I move that we, planning board grant architectural review approval for Building H.
Second.
With revised architecture, subject to the following, one through, one through four.
Second.
Move to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And. We have another issue to, to work on.
Right, there were, yeah, just some, some, some timeframes associated with, and, and I probably didn't need to have, this is part of the application, but I thought while I was here, we, we talked to the board about extending some of the, two of the, of the timeframes with the, with the board. One was the, the latest start of construction for special permitted uses. That start of construction expires July thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. I know it's a year away, but I didn't want to wait till the last minute, and then again, thought I was going to be here tonight. Let me go ahead and ask for that to be extended by a year. And then the, the completion date to, extended to July thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven for the, for the project. Again, it extends both of those, both of those, those dates by a year. We, we, we. We will be mostly done by the end of, of twenty twenty-six, but there's the, the chance some of it will, will spill over to twenty twenty-seven. So just wanted, didn't want to be running up against a, a deadline and coming here in a rush.
It's been a long, long project.
It's been a long, right, it's been a long, right.
Long, really nice. I just visited the olive oil store last week.
Say again?
I went to the olive oil store last week.
Oh, good, good, good.
That was, that was. It's open, we will there, hopefully.
Building H where Lola's is going?
Uh, no, Building J is where Lola's is going, if that shows on my, oh, so, so, Building J is, is here, if you can see on the screen, so, yes. No, Building H, again, is untenanted. We are, um, yeah, right, it's, it's getting skinny out there, right.
And I was asking about Building P earlier, is that?
Right, and Building P's just off the screen to the.
But nothing else yet.
On the bottom here, and, um, we have had recently a tenant look at that, that building. We have the foundation in, so that, that size is kind of fixed. We did have a tenant come in, and it's, it's, it's gotten some momentum, so there's a chance that'll, that'll, that'll move forward.
See you back here in the future for, for that, I'm sure. All right, go ahead.
I move the planning board for the East Dale Village project, grant a waiver of a special use permit requirement of two-ten dash one-five-two dot one-J. That construction be started within one year of the planning board approval of a special use permit for multiple, multi-family dwellings and mixed residential and non-residential uses within multi-story structures, and extend to the latest start date for construction of such SUP uses in the project to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move to the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board for the East Dale Village project, grant a waiver of a site plan requirement of two-ten dash one-five-one-J. That site plan approval shall be void if construction is not started within one year of the date of the planning board approval and completed within two years of the date of such approval, and that the planning board extends the latest start date for construction to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and the completion date to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Second.
Move to the seconded for the waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Keep on building.
Have a good night. Take your samples.
Next up, we have Champion Gaming in Red Oak Smell Plaza.
Thank you for taking the time to speak with us this evening, it means a lot to me. I didn't think that I would actually get emotional about something as silly as the sign that we're approaching the board with tonight, but it represents a great deal to myself and to my local community. I've personally been saving for this sign since prior to COVID, and now we have the opportunity to actually execute this. If you're familiar with my, with my storefront, if you're coming by on the east to west road, I'm very difficult to be seen because of the gas station that sits more prominently close to the road than I am. So in one direction, I'm almost invisible. The plaza is shaped in kind of an L contingency, and I am as far and recessed from that road as there can be. Additionally, the, the signage that exists there is continuous and level on one, on one continuous path. But mine is, I don't know if it was an addition or something like that, I'm kind of more gabled, is that the term? Thank you. And I'd like to take advantage of that unique architectural element to help me compete with other businesses in the area. I'm, I'm not in East Hill Village, I'm not at Dunkin' Donuts, I don't have the, the visibility. I'm just a guy, I'm trying to make ends be. My business is really, oh, excuse me, is really going more online, and I want to bring the local community more into the fold and keep local tax dollars within Dutchess County, as opposed to forcing me on eBay and Amazon and third-party platforms. They take up fifty percent of my sales profitability. I want to be able to provide for my, for my local, for my local kids, a lot of them first-time employees. And having this sign gives me a competitive advantage in word of student, thank you.
Uh, we'll, we'll look at all and discuss it. Eric, your recommendation?
Yeah, um. Uh, it is, the zoning administrator referred this to the planning board because it's not consistent with the signs, the sign, the uniform sign design at the rest of the plaza, which does allow for some changes, but has, they're all lined up below the, you know, along that strip, and none of the gables. So although there are different colors and styles represented at the plaza, none are on the gable or significantly different shape. So it's referred to the planning board for architectural review approval. We've provided a section of the code about designing signs in accordance with an overall signage plan. And the planning board should discuss it, and have provided resolution to either grant, defer, or deny architectural review approval. The board should discuss it and could consider approving this design or an alternate design.
Yep, I mean, currently, all the signs are at the, are below the gables with the, mostly the green background and white lettering. Some have modified.
It occurs to me also to ask, I, to raise a question that I don't know the answer to, which is, I don't know if the board is able to provide an approval or a conditional approval limited to the one tenant. Limited to this tenant as opposed to future tenants.
Yeah, I, we, I mean, we generally, in the town, are trying to avoid signs above the roof line. And that's sort of, you have any comments on that, Lisa? If there'd be something.
Well, I think that, I mean, the application is really for an amendment to this, to the architectural approval for the plaza, right? So it's, and, and so.
Others, I'm just saying, other stores could suddenly come in and want to put, put things on the.
Yeah, you open it up.
Up on there as well, that's.
Right, that's certain.
So that's why I was curious if Lisa had any comments from a legal, legal point of view.
Thank you for bringing this and letting me speak again. My store is not continuous with the rest of the plaza. From the picture that is provided here, it appears to be that way, but it's actually an addition and serves more of an end cap or like an anchor store to the plaza. I, I'm sure that I could grant approval to everybody, from everybody else in the, in the plaza. Because of the nature of my business, I am really the driving factor within the plaza. People drive three, four hours to come to visit my store. And then from that, they're able to then appreciate the, the Chinese food and the different amenities that are a little less unique, the subway, the pizzeria, the hair salon, et cetera.
Yeah, it's certainly a unique business. Did you have anything, Lisa, on that?
So, this is technically, um, because it's on for architectural review, it doesn't fall under my purview, and I have not looked at any of the plans for this. I think it comes down to whether the board wants to amend the, uh, Red Oaks Mills signage, that, you know, the overall signage. And as Eric asked, I'm not sure as I, as I sit here, whether you can, um, do it just for one business and make it so that if the business were to change, it wouldn't, I honestly don't know because I haven't asked to look at it yet.
Are you, are you that whole end area, or do you have, um, someone next to you?
I'm that entire whole end area.
Okay.
I mean, did you consider something like the, uh, the, what do you call it? Can't see it quite.
Yeah, so there's.
State Farm, they did a whole red background with white lettering with your symbol on that, kind of a thing.
It's something that we've considered, uh, but because of the shape and design of my logo, um, it, it would really, it'd be the most advantageous to have a more boxed kind of view to it. Um, especially when you consider that so much of my signage, when you're traveling from east to west, is blocked by that more dominant gas station. That does not, unfortunately, does not appear in these pictures, but if you're familiar with the area, when you're coming down from three-seventy-six.
By there all the time.
Yeah, so, so you know, if you're traveling from three-seventy-six towards Route nine, I'm on the left, and I'm like a secret.
This is the golf station.
Yes, the golf station.
I'm going the other direction.
But if you're going the other way.
Going the other way, it's not a problem.
Excuse me, tell me, what's your, your name again?
Steven.
Steven, first off, I want to say thank you for, for what you do. Small business is the bedrock of, of our economy and our country, and it's, there, you are the risk taker, okay? That's the good news. The bad news is I think you're before the wrong board. In order for us to do this, we, we would have to violate section two-ten-one-twenty-six. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, I'm, but we pretty much are bound by our code. And in order for us to do what you want us to do, you would have to go to the town board and ask them to amend that code to give us the, the ability to make that change. The way this is written right now, we, our hands really are tied.
Well, again, unless you wanted to change the signage plan for the plaza, I mean, that's, that's the whole plaza. I mean, it's, it's part of the site plan review process, right?
That's right.
Typically, so. Are you on the, um, there's, there's a sign in front, a directory sign that has, uh, all of the businesses in the plaza, are you, uh, do you have a sign on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, and that's the one that's up on the, uh, up on Vassar Road, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael.
The store list.
When you say that, it's, that he's asking us to change the plan for the whole plaza. I mean, that building looks, it, they all look similar, but that gable is clearly larger than the rest of them.
Yeah, but it would, it would, um, it would be for the entire plaza. In other words, if someone, say, State Farm came in tomorrow, I'm, I'm being funny here, but say they came in tomorrow and said, actually, we want to have also our sign on the gable.
Put the big, the big State Farm logo up.
Because you allowed Champion Gaming to do it. That we, we wouldn't necessarily be able to say no because we've allowed it here. So that's, that's the problem.
I don't know why that's, I don't know why that's a problem. Rules of the plaza started out as, you know, just everybody put their sign in green with white lettering on, on here. Because it was, because it was along the strip, they've allowed a couple of businesses to change colors. So across the street, the plaza directly across the street, every sign is different.
Yeah.
Probably different ownership.
It is different ownership.
Right, it's a different owner than this plaza, but what I'm saying is, why does it matter? There's not a single residence in sight of any of these buildings.
There is actually.
Which, which one?
You have residents, um, to the right of this, right?
The other, also, the other difference is this plaza was approved, the design was approved specifically for this building. Has nothing to do with the building across the street, specific to this property.
And if it wasn't done well across the street, or if there should have been, that's shame on us and should have been done at some point, but we, there is a site plan for this building, actually Eric has it.
This is, I believe that this is the architectural review approved for this plaza. And it actually shows, uh, it shows uniform signage on the, on the horizontal strip immediately above the entrances and below the gables for each tenant.
Can I make a point here, I, I believe.
It does include, it does appear to include that, I think it includes that gable at the end.
Yep.
Far left.
Let's make sure of that.
Yeah, it does, it does, that's the longer building.
Yes, that's the, it's because that, that gable at the end is, as you said, is very slight, slightly larger than the others, and so it is included in this.
Longer or is it further forward?
It looks like, on this drawing.
The band, the band is a little bit further.
In this drawing, it, it looks slightly higher and wider.
Higher, higher.
Um, on the photograph, it's not clear.
Yeah, my building is actually recessed from the rest of the plaza.
Is it recessed or?
It's recessed slightly, about two feet.
Well, so, I mean, so the other, there's a whole section where the, where the State Farm is, is, is further back than the, than the Chinese food.
State Farm's the only one that has a red sign, right?
Would it, would it be of any help, one of the board members asked about doing a sign along the strip? Um, that was of different coloration, perhaps more distinctive, and you said the logo would be too small. I think I understood you mean it would be too small on that, but I don't know if the board would even entertain it, but the possibility of using a, of, of, your logo on that kind of a strip, but perhaps slightly larger than the strip.
So it would go.
So it would be a little bit more distinctive.
May I ask a question about the, uh, the plan that you were holding up? Um, I, I was reviewing that and trying to come up, I know, uh, in past, um, instances, they have a master sign plan that's approved by the board.
Right.
The planning board. I, I'm looking at this, I don't even see any callouts for signs or saying, this is a sign band. All the architect did was put, like, names of businesses, uh, above the tenant space, uh, in uniformity. Uh, that was Al Capelli, I kind of was, I was with him when he, uh, was showing the new plan here, uh, back in two thousand. And I, I don't see a, you know, something that you would deviate from, saying that, you know, if you put something on your gable end, uh, of your storefront, that it would be, it, it, it's different because you're assuming that, that band is just for signs only. But I don't see it stated on that drawing stating, this is the sign band, you're to use, uh, channel letters or box signs or whatever it is.
Well, it's really no different than the architectural review that you saw earlier tonight, right? When we had the, uh, the, the new, the repurposing of the Umberto's Restaurant. We accepted the architecture shown, uh, and that does include, you know, they, they similarly showed sign locations would, where the signs would go, and they don't know the tenants, but they, they will abide by that, or we will certainly hold them to that standard when the, when the, uh, when that comes in, that's part of architectural review.
The, the sign is also, uh, under the square footage, that's allowed, uh, just to.
Do you still do, uh, right now with the sign there, advertising paintball and sports and that, all that stuff, is that part of your business?
I think that's.
Oh, it's the previous set.
That's the previous one.
So I've actually, uh, I started in two thousand and one cleaning the bathrooms, and, uh, I have, I've been focusing my, my limited asset on other things, other than the signage, um, to try to make my business actually go.
Trying to picture what kind of sign do you have there now?
This is, this is what I currently have there now, and it does not fit my business. I do not actually sell.
Thing is still there, you're saying?
Yeah, I actually, um, sell paintball, but that is another spot in the same plaza. Uh, sports cards, unfortunately, they've decided to go direct to consumer, and, uh, TOPS was purchased by Fanatics, and I cannot wholesale resell sports cards.
Wow.
Um, I understand that the board is, uh, governed and restricted by some rules and regulations, as Peter pointed out, so I understand that. But I also, um, is it possible to get a, a conditional approval and then meet with the town? And see if they would make an exemption, or am I getting in, over my head there?
No, if, 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 what I think Peter was referring to is to change the zoning law, and which is what, where, where the sign regulations are, would require a town board action, and so there's a whole process. It's basically, uh, drafting and, and adopting a local law, um, to change the zoning, um, and that's not.
That's expensive, you don't want to deal with either.
Well, that, that too is, is, yeah, it's not simple.
Just wondering if you, if you could go with it, you know, where the green band is now, go with a, a red band, put different things up there with your symbol at the end of it. And maybe as Eric's interested, if the symbol's a, a little bit bigger and it could go a little bit above the band, would that be, um, you think that would be violating the, would not, would not be as big and as high, as high up as, as you're showing it?
The zoning administrator's not going to accept that unless you explicitly say that you want to have signs that go above the sign band, so.
My, my current signage sits below the sign band. It sits two feet below the sign band, so I'm not in compliance with the sand, sign band currently because of the unique architecture of the building.
Right, and you could see here on this, on this drawing that the, this band is where his sign is.
Well, that's the sign band.
And, but the next door is.
A little bit higher, yeah.
Looks like two feet above it.
Yeah, but then further down.
Further down is a little bit lower, yeah.
I know, I know I'm one of the newest members of the board, but I'm looking at this, and this is a commercial district, really, where across the street is a commercial, another commercial plaza.
Yeah.
And across the street has all different signs, and I know that it's a different building. But maybe I'm not seeing why it's a problem to let these businesses apply for signs that show off what they're about, right?
I agree with you, the problems we have, the challenges we have is it's, it's codified, it's codified, that's.
So that would be a legislative decision that the town board could make, that we should loosen our zoning related to signage, but I don't think that's something that the planning board necessarily can.
I'm, I'm with you, I'm, I agree with you a hundred percent, everything that you said, and everything that Steven said. Problem again is that we have a law on the books and, you know, we are, do we take an oath, honestly, to uphold?
Right, so they're on before us for a.
Architectural.
Architectural review.
Yep.
And so the issue is that if we allow this sign in this location, we're loosening it up for this building or the entire town?
Well, we're in violation of the.
It's more than listening.
Well, we wouldn't be in violation because you would be, you would be approving an al, an alternate architectural plan.
It'd be specific to the plaza.
It would apply to the whole plaza.
So that's not violating the, the law, so.
Okay, so all the building, all the businesses.
Let me go back to what I was saying about this, this is a commercial plaza, uh, across the street from a commercial plaza. The only house I can think of that's anywhere is behind Goodfellas, which wouldn't be able to see any of these signs. And I don't see the issue with having this plaza have signs that reflect what they want to do. That being said, any new signage would have to come before us for architectural review, and if it's lewd or if it violates town code as far as size or illumination or anything like that.
It's a little open-ended, but we'd have to come back to you because if you establish a new, if you establish a new uniform, a, a new uniform signage for the plaza inclusive of this style of sign, if the zoning administrator just, just determines that another sign is consistent with that uniform thing, that uniform character, it doesn't have to come to the planning board.
Yeah, we don't always.
I mean, we don't, we don't see a lot of signs. This is very unusual.
This is very, yeah.
I mean, even across the, the way.
This is a ZVA thing usually.
Even across the building, the way, all the signs may be, may be different, but they're all inlined up and they're all, nothing's going above the, the roof height, which is what we're trying to, we just had the car wash come in, try and put a sign up way above the rooftop, and they weren't allowed, allowed to do that, they had to cut it back down.
What about the building owner? Does he have?
Yeah, like the plaza could come in and request to change the overall sign plan for the plaza.
Yes.
Yeah, that could be.
Just another alternative occurs to me, um, for, for you, for your consideration of the boards. I would think, I, I don't know how visible the, I guess would be the north elevation of the building is from the road, and I know tenants are typically limited to one sign, but I, I'm wondering if, if there might be an alternative to seek a variance to place a similar kind of a sign on the north elevation when one does not currently exist.
I don't, I don't think that would be visible from.
What do you mean?
Because of the good, uh, gas station.
I think he's talking about.
Yeah, the, the gas station currently obstructs my view.
That's not going to work.
Okay.
I appreciate the, the suggestion.
Yeah, we're just trying to be creative.
Yeah, yeah.
Create ways to help you out here with this, it's, uh.
So, just to be clear, we're not, if we, the negative implication of us permitting either this sign or, let's say, a smaller sign that's a little bit lower or whatever it is, um, in this location, would be that the other businesses in this building alone, in this plaza, may not have to come back to us if they propose a similar sign and the zoning administrator looks at it.
Yeah, they don't approve signs like that necessarily.
No, they would, they, basically the precedent would be that, or the, the sign plan would be changed such that if people wanted to put signs on the gable, they could do that, uh, with an permit from the.
Right, so we're not violating the, the law, we're just amending the site plan as far as signs are concerned?
So, I didn't, I wasn't asked to look at this, so this hasn't been part of my review, so, um, but I just, I pulled up the section that is referenced, um, in zoning administrators and by Peter, and it says that signs shall be designed in accordance with an overall comprehensive signage plan in which the size, materials, color, and color of wall-mounted signage shall be appropriate to the dimensions and architectural appearance of the building to which it's affixed. So if the board were inclined to allow something, some change from what's currently allowed, you should address the size, material, and color of the wall-mounted signage, and maybe you say something like this particular, um, you know, because of the size of this gable, you know, a larger sign is allowed. And then it, I, I don't know if there's a matching gable at the other end of the property, but then what you'd be allowing would be signs like this for any applicant, any business in that location.
Isn't this up to the building owner though? Doesn't they have some?
Well, the building owner signed off on this application, I assume.
So they, I mean, they're building owner, once they're, they're plausible, the same, the kinds, I guess, consistent, but.
The building owner would.
The building owner was agreeing, agreeing with you guys.
Yes, so I, I've been there for quite a long time. Um, I, he understands that I drive a lot of traffic into his plaza, and he wants me to stay at that location.
Yep.
Um, I'm, I'm a five, I, I do all right, um, I do okay, um, but I mean, without, I'm tucked away, and if I'm continued to be tucked away and I'm unable to get this sign adjusted and I'm unable to, like, spread my wings, so to speak, um, I, I, it's, it's, it's frustrating, and I might seek greener pastures. And the, the, the plaza owner understands and acknowledges that, so he wants to keep me happy.
Plaza owners on, on board with it or that allows to, to make a, a change across the.
Well, I don't, I don't know, um, we haven't had any conversation with them about whether they, how they would feel about that being elsewhere.
Right.
And I guess, another question that occurs to me for the board is, is do you want to change the uniform design plan for the plaza based upon the color, materials, and appearance change for one tenant? Or do you, would you want to see what the effect of that would be hypothetically for other tenants as well?
Well, other tenants do have other colors, that's not, the, the color isn't the issue.
Most of them are green, but a couple have changed.
Yeah, only, only three of them are green.
Going, going back to Lisa's point, this is the only, uh, tenant space in this plaza that has this size gable, so as part of our, you know, assuming that if we go to approve it, we can say because this is the larger gable, this size sign is appropriate.
I don't know that's, I don't know that's true, I haven't.
That's legal.
Well, but I don't know the, do we know that that's the only gable that's that size, or?
According to this, according to the photograph, it is.
Yeah, but I mean, I can't see the one at the end, I don't know.
I think this is the largest gable in that plaza.
It, it really is.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, probably due to the geography, the way the plaza was built, it's a little bit lower there.
Right, and that, that last sign is the lowest.
They pushed the, they gave love to meet the, the others in height.
Yeah, I think at this point, you'll know where I stand.
Yep.
What do you guys think? What are your thoughts? I think it has to be somehow conforming with the rest of the plaza.
Well, you know, I, I don't think it's, I don't see it as being inconformant anyway, because there's so many different colors, and this is at a different level. That strip that everything else is on is at a different level, and it is a larger gable, so I don't think there's really conformity there anyway.
Okay, yeah, so it's not. It's an unusual situation with that particular building, particularly with a gable.
Also, it's an unusual situation for just that one, this one tenant, you know, because he's tucked in the corner as well, so he has a, an issue that the other tenants don't have.
Well, tucked in the corner, in plazas like this too, you get tenants tucked in the other corner too, that you can't see coming the other way, the whole, the whole strip, don't be able to see it all when you go north.
Did you say you were the paintball tenant, or somebody else was that tenant?
I am both, I am the shop, uh, all the way to the left that we're currently discussing, and then, uh, to the left of the State Farm, as it appears in the image, I am also the paintball tenant.
I note there's no gable for the paintball store to have a bigger sign above it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely stores without a gable.
Right.
Could I seek conditional approval based upon the other tenants' responses, as well as the landlord?
If we were gonna go that route, I would suggest that we defer and get the information.
Just defer and get their, get their information.
Other meeting, yeah, I don't.
I think that's, that's what I was gonna say, if we can get some buy-in from the plaza owner, uh, it sounds like you've talked to him, and he's, he's willing, but we're gonna make, we gotta have that on the record to.
I've been trying to get this sign for three years, yeah.
To make an official thing.
I can, uh, get a document to, uh, have the owner, I could be representative of the owner, Larry, um, you know, so he doesn't have to show up to the meeting, he'll sign off on a document stating that I can represent him in this matter.
Well, it's not just, it's not just this particular one, but we gotta make sure he's, he's okay with changing the, the whole plan for the whole plaza, so that anybody can put the, put a sign on the gable, so it's, it's not just, because that's what it would be.
You know, in the hope that we don't waste anyone's time or Steven's money, I think, again, we need to get an opinion about two ten, one twenty-six, and what authority, if any, do we have to act outside of that ordinance?
Well, I think it's clear though, it's not outside of the ordinance if we're, if it's part of a signage plan, right, the, the signage plan rests with the planning board, that was part of the.
Site plan approval process, yeah.
And if you look, I, I don't wanna modify the signage plan without the approval of the, of the building owner.
Well, that's a separate question from what Peter's asking about, which is.
But if we modify the signage plan, then it will still be consistent with two ten, one twenty-six, I believe, is how it would.
Signage shall be presented as a unified plan that is integrated into the overall building design, if you look at that building right now, you see uniformity.
So they'd have to show us a, another version of a, a uniform sign plan, right, or a, a, I mean, or a sign plan at least for the whole plaza, if they wanted to go that route. I don't.
What is, what is uniform, I heard material, color?
Actually, it says, it says shall be presented as a unified plan.
Yeah.
It doesn't say uniform signage, it says unified plan that is integrated into the overall building design, color, scale, massing.
So, yeah, it doesn't have to be.
Different colors, wh, what was the ordinance that Lisa read to us?
It actually says comprehensive.
That's, that's from the same.
No, it actually, so the words exactly are, signs shall be designed in accordance with an overall comprehensive signage plan.
Which is exactly what they have, if you look at the signage, they're all placed on the fascia, they're all lettering.
Right.
There, there's no design, and, and any of the signage sits there consistently, that's what two ten forty-six says.
Overall comprehensive signage.
All you have to do is look at the picture, that's all you have to do.
Well, Subway has a distinct sign.
And so does State Farm.
So does State Farm.
Clearly color, clearly color was not.
So does the grocery store overhead.
But they're, I mean, they're just, they're on the band, and they're just lettering.
They're all on the fascia.
They're all lettering, I mean, but I was saying like State Farm has their little symbol as well, that you could have your symbol and some lettering along the fascia there.
Yeah.
Without, without any trouble, without any issues.
Yes.
Without any approval by this board.
Without approval by us or anyone, you could, you make the sign red and put your symbol on it, and whatever you need to do on that thing, but putting it up on the, on the parapet there.
Yeah, uh, to.
And the gable makes it a little.
To Mr. Holman's point, um, it says it's a unified plan, not a uniform plan, so if I were to unify the plaza to agreement of the plan, that would fulfill the requirement, right? Because it's unified, not uniform, so if I present a plan that has me with the signage that I wish, and everybody a, a, applies to it uni, for, unified, right? As opposed to uniform, that's.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, we'd have to have the buy-in from the plaza owner for all this stuff.
Uh, right, about that, there's an affidavit here from the owner.
Yeah, they signed off on the application, but I don't know if they knew that that was for, we don't know if they knew that was for his sign on his thing, or changing the sign plan for the plaza.
Right.
There's a difference.
Can we then vote on a conditional approval subject to receipt of that, of the owner's buy-in?
Again, the owner does not have any authority to change this code.
Right, but.
Just because he, he wants it, does not give him the authority to change it, the only people that can change it are the people on the town board, they're the ones who legislate.
I think if, I think it would be consistent though, if the, if the owner agrees to a consistent pattern across the whole.
But we could, we could amend the sign plan.
Yes, you could.
And that's the issue with, we don't know if the owner agrees to do that for the whole plaza.
Right, the owner signed off on, on his particular store, and, uh.
Would we have to have a public hearing to do that?
It's a site plan amendment, um, whether we, it's a.
Could waive the hearing, yes.
Could waive the hearing or not, yeah, that's really kinda up to you, yeah.
I don't have any problem doing that.
I think at this point, we should defer and try to get new information from the, uh, from the owner.
The owner, I, again, I don't think it's relevant here, the, the owner is, is not a member of the planning board, it has nothing to do with any, Steven has already said he approves it, we've got, apparently we've got something in writing that he's happy with it. If we have the authority to change this, then let's do it.
Then we can just do it conditionally, I think I still want buy-in from the owner before all the stores start coming and saying, I wanna put a symbol up on the parapet, on the, on the gable, and then the owner says, oh, wait a minute, I didn't mean that.
Then let's defer it to next month, we think that, if we have time to do that.
I was thinking, the reason I, I proposed, uh, conditional approval subject to staff getting what, what would satisfy them as far as the owner is concerned, is to save, you know, local store owner from having to show up again.
Yeah, and it, wouldn't you, wouldn't you wanna see what the unified sign plan for the plaza looks like? I mean, is it just this gable, is it, is it all the gables, is it, I don't know, I mean, that's typically, again, we would have some kind of a, it's, it, for a plaza, you would have some kind of a plan that applies to the, the plaza.
Right.
And we don't have that currently.
And if we had had the opportunity to do that for the plaza across the street, we would have done that.
Well, I mean, they are uniform in, in the way of, uh, they're all lined up.
There's no question, if you look at the picture, that's a unified plan.
I mean, even across the street, they're all lined up, and, and.
In this, in this plaza, it's, it's uniform, they're all on the fascia, we'll get a couple of exceptions, they're all lettering, similar.
I mean, as much as I hate to have them come back, I think that's what we need to do is defer and have it, have it, uh, get some more information on that.
I'd also like to get, have our, our legal department render an opinion about whether or not we have the authority to do that.
Yeah, and she was not, you know, passed into this, uh.
We'll have to get some escrow for that, um, to have Lisa's input on that.
All right.
Okay, I move the planning board defer architectural review approval for Champion Gaming, Champion Gaming, Red Oaks Mill Plaza application.
Uh, with the condition, with the condition that we're, we're checking.
We want a proposed a sign plan.
Proposed sign plan.
For the plaza.
For the plaza that the owner agreed.
That's, that addresses the things in two ten, one twenty-six, right?
Second.
Move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, and we should pass this six to zero. We wish you luck, as, you know, Peter said, our hands are kinda tied right now, and we wanna make sure it's all done legally.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Last up, it's only a.
We're like sausage maker.
Mike?
Yeah, um, so this is a, uh, proposed zoning code amendment, uh, related to the McDonald Heights Center District, um, the town board, last year, or early the year before, I think, uh, I mean, I think it was late twenty twenty-three, um, adopted some changes to the town's zoning law that basically separated out tobacco stores from other types of retail, uh, in a, in an effort basically to, to make it just a little bit harder to open a tobacco store, as, as we were seeing a proliferation of them. Um, and so they are allowed by special use permit currently in the Arlington Town Center, Red Oaks Mill, um, Shopping Center Districts, South Hills Commons, Fairview Center, and Business Highway Districts. Uh, we did not at that time, the town board did not at that, at that time include McDonald Heights, um, there's now an interest in having a, I believe, a cigar shop and tobac, uh, and, and at Eastdale Village, which is basically what McDonald Heights is. Um, town board was willing, uh, to make that change, they set a public hearing date for April sixteenth, this, this came just last night, they set the public hearing date for April sixteenth, and, uh, of course, uh, it requires a recommendation from the planning board to the town board.
This will not open it up for cannabis shop too, or?
It's not a cannabis retail dispensary, it's a tobacco store, right, yeah, it's a different section of code.
Okay, just a thorough check.
Yeah, those are not the same under our zoning.
And are we conveying a positive recommendation or a neutral?
That's up to you.
Either that or pack it in.
If they could try too hard that time, come on.
Okay, uh, so.
Any discussion, anybody, uh, everybody okay with it?
Everyone's okay with positive, okay. So, uh, staff recommends that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed zoning tax amendment related to tobacco stores.
Move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, so she passes. Any other business the board wants to bring up tonight?
Good luck to Marie State.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a question.
Thank you.
How many cannabis shops are we gonna have at the Kipsey?
Shall we finish, shall we get off the line?
I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
All right.
Seconded.
So moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, Lisa.